Not going to be here?
No, he's not here.
Okay, I saw that he's not here. All right, so salute to the flag. We're on our own?
Yes.
Okay. The flag is behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any for instance? This one? Nothing? And I don't know that we have any public comments? I'm guessing not? Public? Pardon? Yeah, everybody's still on vacation? Yeah, okay. So, the consent agenda, does anybody have anything to extract from the consent agenda? Okay, that we need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
A second.
Okay, great. All right, all those in favor? Hi. Okay, thank you. Um, okay. Cave?
Sure.
Wait, we just jumped right in.
We just jumped right in there. I told you he was going to be in and out of here in no time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It looks so wrong. It goes fast.
Good evening, Superintendent Gilbert, members of the Woodbridge Department of Education. My name is Bob Guthrie, and I'm here on behalf of Cave to recognize the efforts of the Woodbridge School District. In order to receive a Bonnie B. Carney Award for Excellence for Educational Communications, entries must meet all of the following criteria. First is the general criteria, which includes clarity of message, image, and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines are readability, editing, type, format, presentation, design, and value of expenditure. I'm very happy to present the Woodbridge School District with the award for excellence for educational communications for the principal's message. The type of project was Going Green, and the project is an electronic distribution to keep the parents informed of important topics, events at Beecher Road School, in our viewable on the district website. Cave has been honoring school districts with the award for excellence for educational communications since 1975. In 2016, the award was renamed and honored longtime Cave staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her 47 years dedication to education focused on communications. With this award, Cave's goal is to identify and honor hard-working people in school districts for their continuing effort to communicate between the local school district and the community. So, on behalf of Cave, congratulations to the Woodbridge Public Schools.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We'd like to get a picture of you, Bob, and Gina.
Another form of Going Green communication.
We know that. Our Bob's kid's in school, it's my first time.
I grew up with her husband, we're still good friends.
Well, there was no fish in here!
Shot to see him sit there.
All right. One more, hold on. Okay, all right. Hold on. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, I do get some support with this, so there's a lot of hands that go into this. So, a lot of my content, I do get content from my colleagues, and also James Crawford, who helps with some of the technology to make this happen. But, I think it's been a good resource for parents, and having everyone contribute to it so that, aside from the classroom newsletters that you get, these are the things that are happening in the greater community of the school. So, thank you, Cave.
Great. Welcome to stay!
Great to see you.
Thank you.
We have actually chairs, actually, Bob.
We usually have to trip. Okay, PTO, I believe, I'm getting more. I'm going to wait on that one. And then we'll go to the super dependent.
Okay. And I'm going to ask if it's okay with the chair, I was going to ask that after I finish my announcements, before I do the communication update, if we could continue, some of my announcements kind of flow with the principal's announcements and administrative team, so if that's okay, but I'll flow into theirs, and then I'll come back and do the communications update.
Sure. Everybody's good with that?
Okay. All right, so, welcome back, everybody. Those who had a chance to get away or do something different during the April break, we're hoping that happened, and we're welcoming you back. It is only eight short weeks until, this is the last day of school.
Is it really?
So, not to get anybody nervous.
Not to start.
Or excited, one or the other. But, it's amazing how the year will continue to move through. So, there we are, time moves on. Last night, many of us had an opportunity to attend the annual budget hearing that takes place each year in April, where the town residents have an opportunity to weigh in or ask questions and give their thoughts about the budget that's being put forth by the Board of Finance. There were a number of people in the audience. It was a fairly quick meeting last night, and it was fairly uneventful for the most part, and the budget seemed to be moving forward as presented. And May 21st is the annual town meeting at 7:30 in the same center school gymnasium where the town will meet and officially act upon the budget. So, thanks to those of you who were able to be there last night. The MAG orientation program for parents, the MAG team has had their information nights, and things are moving forward, and the lottery for MAG will be taking place on May 4th, just around the corner. Safety and security update, just as a reminder, or just as sort of as a reflection, you'll remember a few weeks ago, I sent communications to all of you, as well as all families at Beecher Road School regarding the recent incident that took place in Woodbridge. I want to again recognize the leadership of our administrative team, as well as our school resource officer, Officer Lynch, as well as the cooperation and follow-through of all of our staff members and students who did a great job during that day and during that time period. Thank you for your support, board members and parents as well. We have just, just before the vacations started, we posted several openings and positions for the 2018-19 school year. There will be, there was a posting for reading, language arts, music, STEAM, as well as a halftime special education teacher. And I will be attending a minority teacher recruitment hiring fair this coming Thursday, sponsored by ACES. And we will be making efforts to meet different candidates who may be interested in those positions. There may be a couple of administrative team members who might be accompanying me possibly, so looking forward to that on Thursday afternoon. Board members, you may have noticed in your different communications through Cave that there is something called the Cave Equity Toolkit. I mentioned this in a board update along the way, but there, Cave is looking for three different communities in the state to pilot an equity toolkit. This would include a guide for boards of education to engage diverse community stakeholders in conversations about equity and cultural competency. It appears that their criteria is really to have towns participate who have more of a free and reduced population and participation rate of over 40%. However, I have reached out and have officially applied to Cave, and so if, we may be lucky enough to be part of that if things work in our favor, so we'll keep you updated about that along the way.
So, I mean, it's good for you guys for doing that, it's great, you know, even though we might not have a big chance.
We were encouraged, even though, even though the person I spoke to knows Woodbridge in terms of what their criteria was, they still encouraged us. So, that may mean there may not be a lot of interest from other people, so, from other districts, so.
Bob, may I ask a question?
Sure.
If you can provide more color. Is their understanding of equity really based on income? Solely on income? Because it seems like it keeps going back to that as the criteria.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. It seems like there's a direct tie based upon their criteria there. I know what you're saying. I don't know, I mean, I think, I think they do have a broader feeling of that and a broader definition from all I've seen from Cave, but I know, I know why you're saying that just by virtue of what qualifies you to be a town.
Right, so you're a town. It just seems like to broaden it, we could also help educate Cave life. Help educate Cave as far as how our towns are evolving, because if we even look at the makeup, the population makeup in the last 10, 20 years, it's changed so dramatically.
That's correct.
And, you know.
I think ours is actually perfect for something like this.
It really is.
And we don't fit that criteria, but we're perfect to have the conversation, and we have a rich diverse population that would, I think, really make good use of this.
Right. And I think it's great that they were encouraging, though, even though, you know, and they weren't making this like a cutoff kind of thing.
Right.
They were saying this is probably what we're, you know, we're looking at, but the fact that they were encouraging, you know, I mean, maybe it is that they're, you know, that they're a little, taking a broader look. I mean, there's a lot of schools that are closer to 90 than 40, so, I mean, districts.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, I can't remember what the state is. I think that also before, if we can be, I'm speaking for myself as a member of the board, but if we can be helpful to help provide support letters, and that just seems like such a wonderful opportunity if it's only, it's through the schools within. Three districts. Three districts.
Minor state. Minor state, yes.
Right, and that's a tremendous opportunity for us to just, just be a mark in that. Because I think we do things evolve, it's something's evolving, so I had a better, more concise point, but it's, I think it's a, it's an important exercise, and without an entity like Woodbridge or the district here, and then only looking at that criteria, it would be poorly suited, you know.
I kind of think that actually, a town that doesn't fit that profile would be helpful in the conversation to give a richness to the process.
Yes.
So, and there was no, while there was no mention of, you know, people writing into, you know, board members to write to them to say, you know, I really would like our district to be considered, they didn't say you couldn't do that either, so, you know.
Would it be possible for me, for any of us to write a supporting letter? It was in our Cave communications, so we all have the.
So, if you go back to that, there was a specific email address.
Mine, if we do that.
I have no problem with that, I think that, you know, they want board members to be active, so.
Yeah, no, and kudos for jumping on that, because, you know. Yeah, that was great, Bob. And team. Team Bob.
Please, no t-shirts. Okay. Sure, good, good points. As you probably know, we've communicated out a couple times through my parent update and once through the principal's newsletter as well, we mentioned our Panorama Every Other Year survey. It is going to be released to all families tomorrow. It'll be emailed out one to all, to each family, a survey, a survey link, and so that'll be open for families from April 25th through May 7th. Staff and students in grades three through six have been provided the survey this current week that we're in right now, and we anticipate coming back with survey results either the June meeting or slightly thereafter. So, that's in process, and we were glad that Panorama was able to work with us very efficiently and effectively to create companion surveys to the family survey for our staff and our students, and we're looking forward to those results as they help us for continuous improvement.
And this is our third year of basically the same survey, and I know there's more, a couple additions.
This will be the third administration, 2014, 2016, and now 2018.
So, that'll be interesting.
Right.
It's always interesting.
It'll be the first set of results for the staff and the students.
Yeah.
From this vendor.
Yeah.
Staffing updates tonight, as you know from the agenda, you'll, I'll be asking the board, or the board will be asked to act on resignations as well as a leave of absence, so just know that's coming in our agenda for later this evening. PTO book fair was held recently, it was again a very, very successful, another successful event. A huge display of books, huge is not the right word, it's just, it's not, it's, it was just amazing. Every year it seems like there's a larger and larger selection, and it's overwhelming. The theme of the fair was Paws for Books, and that's pretty good, P-A-W-S. This fair always brings a sense of celebration and joy to the school, the quantity and quality of books available, the range of genres and levels were superb. The book fair was open to BRS families and the community on the Thursday evening of that week, and kudos, of course, again, to the organizers and members of our PTO who worked so hard to make the week a fun for learning opportunity and community building experience for our children.
Is it still, is Marge, can you use it still?
She did this past year, chaired it, but the reins are being kind of.
Oh, passed along?
Passed along.
It really is, I mean, she's just brought this thing, and the whole PTO has just brought this to a whole different level, you know, than.
And the students have been able to contribute artwork over the last few book fairs. This year, Mrs. Weidner, Ms. Weidner had some of the students drawing animals with paws, and that was the decor for this year.
Did we have Clifford the Big Red Dog?
Was there?
Clifford, Clifford the Big Red Dog has attended in the past.
Annie the Reading Dog was there.
Okay. We've evolved to the feminine. And reading, Clifford never read anything, Clifford just showed up.
Annie the Reading Dog.
All right. Everything's going up a notch. Okay, thanks.
Love that. We also had a, an amazing learning day for faculty, Professional Development Learning Day on the 30th of, the 30th? No, it was the 20th. Thank you, March 29th. It's the last month, I've forgotten, I'm still working on April. Thank you, Marsha. And I know, the board members, I know I sent an agenda to you of all the different offerings, and I'm sure you were probably intrigued on the number of topics and the variety in the, for a small district. Again, kudos to our Professional Development Committee, who's chaired by Gina, and as well as Dory Merrill, our WA president, and I know Gina's going to talk a little bit about that in a little bit. My last item for tonight is just a recognition that tomorrow is an important day, tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, and so it'll be a day that we honor all of the administrative professionals, all of our office workers in the, in our school, our seven very dedicated people, Marsha is one of them. So, thank you, Marsha, and thank you, everybody, for your work. And I'm going to, if that's okay with you, I'm going to encourage our principal's report to flow right from there.
So, I will have help tonight as well. So, actually going to start with a bit of like informational, so each year, our sixth graders have a couple of events that are coming up, and one would be the Dare Graduation. So, it is scheduled for May 18th, some information will be coming home to all sixth grade parents in the next few days, just so they can kind of block that out. We thank Officer Lynch for always making this a special event for the students, so we hope that folks can make it. We are also intending for our promotion ceremony to be on the 19th of June, we're just waiting on confirmation from the high school for that. It shouldn't be a problem considering that their graduation is a little bit earlier, but we do use their venue. So, just some information to put out there. So, the Drama Club, for extended day, as you know, drama is huge here, and they have over 80 students this year. Big production. There is a dress rehearsal that is open to the parents as well on Thursday, next Thursday, the 3rd, at 4:30. And due to the number of students that are in the production, tickets are very, very limited, two per student, so that we can fit into the South Assembly. That is why they're opening the dress rehearsal as well for other folks that might want to come. So, Friday evening, Thursday evening or Friday, you will be entertained, I'm sure. And I'll be at one of the presentations, I'm sure there'll be another. And our outdoor concert, sorry, our PTO Book Swap. PTO Book Swap is coming. So, the book swap's a little different than the book fair. It's a time for parents to hold on to a few treasured books, but share with others some books that maybe have been gently used or read. And the self-assembly room is set up by genre, or by, grouped by chapter books, or grouped by topic or title, and the students get to shop. It is a swap. And honestly, you go down there, the excitement is just so high, and they come away with a, you know, a bunch of books that are new to them, but loved by somebody else already. So, it's really a great event. Again, we thank the PTO, it's a lot of organization to this, but it really is pretty fantastic, and it just, and it keeps that love of reading going. Our fifth graders are going to be headed to, and I want to say it's their third STEAM Day, so it is a partnership with Amity High School, and we head over to the high school, as does the student, the fifth graders from Bethany and the fifth graders from Orange, we each have our own time, and it's awesome to see the high school students and what they have created and learned and studied and can share. It really gets a high interest from our fifth graders and our teachers as well, so we'll be headed over there next week. Our great partnership with Eli Whitney continues, they either come here or we go there. Today, our second graders went to the Eli Whitney trip, and they were carrying out their projects that they created, you know, it's so gently that they go out with them to make sure nothing happens to them. But, again, these are some time-honored traditions and things that are kind of rites of passage for students at various grade levels. And another one is the Rotary Club today. They were here to hand out the dictionaries. So, we had all of the third graders and the third-year MAG students in the cafeteria today, and a wonderful group led by Tony Osteagio today presented the dictionaries to the students, that everyone had a chance to kind of look up some different things, there was information shared, and so we have a quote from one of the third graders that said, and one of the teachers shared it with me after they returned to class, "I am going to put this book in my favorite book collection." So, you know, it just really.
Pretty covered.
So, I mean, there are a few others, you know, I'm going to learn a new word every day. So, it really is just an exciting, you know, an exciting time for them, and they get to use them for the rest of this year, and then take them home and carry them through. Bob asked me to talk a little bit about our Professional Development Day. So, a thank you to Marsha, because each year, I mean, each day, we offer more and more and more for our teachers, and so we, just as we talk about differentiation for students, we talk about differentiation for adults. And Marsha says, "How am I getting all of this on to this agenda?" But somehow miraculously, she does. And we had our facilitators from Columbia University here with reading and writing project for part of the day. They were here, teachers got to go to that for part of the day. Dr. Stebinger led some work around NGSS and engineering for part of the day. There were smaller PLCs or professional learning communities, learning some things through assistive technology for some of our students. So, there was a wide range of opportunities, learning opportunities for the faculty, and we get to be a part of that. We don't always lead all of, all of the professional learning, and sometimes it's our own colleagues that lead that here, our own staff, sometimes we bring in people from the outside. But, again, it was a great day of professional learning, and to keep on the theme of differentiation, you know, Bob's talked about our, you know, kind of school-wide enrichment. So, you've heard a little bit maybe from Genius Hour and Project-Based Learning in fifth grade, and, you know, how we're testing the waters with a capstone project in sixth grade, and enrichment clusters in third grade. So, second grade is experimenting in their own bit of project-based learning around community. So, recently, they had several members, and students got to choose what avenue, so to speak, that they wanted to learn about, and so there was a firefighter who was in one classroom, and someone from finance in Mr. Halsey's classroom, and Sherman and I got to go to Mr. Rizzo's classroom and be interviewed, the questions that the students asked us, because that was their interest level. So, and that's, I think, all, almost every student probably got their first choice, so the engagement was really there, and we were thoroughly impressed and somewhat stumped sometimes by some of the questions that we, that we were asked, and I'm sure if you asked any of the other members of the community that got to come, and the students really loved it, and it was like a mini kind of project base, there will be a product at the end, but I think having the students understand their community and being able to delve into and ask the questions at their level shows just another kind of great deal of differentiation for our students. Our teacher assistants also had some professional learning, so Cheryl is going to share a little bit about that.
Hi. The teaching assistants, I was able to work with them doing something called PMT, which stands for Physical Psychological Management Training. And essentially what that means is we, I was able to provide proactive strategies to help with students when they're upset, to help to escalate them, give them some tools in their toolbox. So, I'm a trained PMT trainer, so I'm able to work with the staff and teach them strategies. And I would, I'd say the focus this time was 100% on proactive strategies, and the main thing we really talked about was effective communication. So, just kind of breaking it down into parts for them, and the feedback I got from the staff was incredible, that they, they really didn't know what to expect when they first got there, but it was, they were all engaged, I did it in two sessions, and I was so impressed with the feedback I got and the conversations and the dialogue, so it was very impressive with them.
Great. Thank you. Also, starting next week, Smarter Balance Assessment does begin, Sherman is going to, we got all the good topics.
So, if you have a student in grades three, four, five, and six, you should have received this lovely letter letting you know that Smarter Balance is starting. The test date, the test window this year is May 1st through May 11th, so we're starting testing on a Tuesday. We don't actually test on every single one of those days, just to clarify that. The first week, they're taking an ELA, English Language Arts Assessment, there's only one English Language Arts Assessment. So, if students finish it on the first day of testing, then they have no more tests for the rest of the week. If they don't finish it, then they are given additional time the next day. The tests are untimed, but we limit our testing to only one hour, just to prevent fatigue and not to go away, you know, instructional time. The next week, the second week in May, we will be doing the math portion. There are two math tests to take. Again, so we usually do the first math test the first day, if they're done, they're done, if they're not done, they go on the second day and finish it up, and then we usually do the second math test the third day. So, students usually test anywhere between three and five days total, but only one hour each day. Okay? And if anyone has any questions, it says in the letter, they can reach out to us, and we did put in the letter that we are encouraging participation, so that we hit that 95% participation rate, so we'll hopefully keep that number up there.
And if you haven't gotten the letter, it went home in backpacks.
Backpacks.
So.
Thank you.
I may ask, Michelle, are you interested in trying to do, because we did want to get the numbers up a bit and maybe help educate, further educate, is there something that the board or any other entities might be able to do to help facilitate that? Just to be a little bit not as passive, I guess.
So, if people ask you questions, I mean, I know we shared some of the information when we presented the accountability report, and also we did share our brochure, pamphlet, and anybody that I've tried to reach out to, you know, we've offered that to have them take a look at the reasons to support standardized testing. We also have told anybody that I've talked to and anybody that we shared how closely that the Smarter Balance Assessments are resembling SAT questioning or ACT questions, so it's something that students are going to see as they continue on in their education, and so that, you know, just having conversation if you're asked.
If the letter was helpful to not, to just help educate a bit more and create that sort of, reduce the deterrence component.
So, I know I shared a lot today, but I do want to say a few thank you, because we have a lot of community support here at Beecher, and just even thinking about the folks that take time out of their day, the members of the Rotary today, the PTO volunteers, parents who chaperone field trips, the members of the community that came to support, you know, the community learning in second grade. We could not do this if we were not that team. So, you know, just a thank you, all of you who sit here, a thank you as well, and to our administrative assistants who take care of our lives every day. So, anything for me before I end Bob's on? All right, thanks.
I do want to just say before I start the communications presentation that, as you remember from the strategic plan, we talked about professional learning as a really key important item. It is for any organization, whether it's an educational organization or whatever the business may be, but it's important for everybody in the organization to have professional learning. So, I just, you know, the fact that the teacher assistants, as Cheryl described, are getting very specific training that's very keyed into some of the challenges that they have in their work during the course of the day and during the course of the year is a really key thing. And we're also taking that same philosophy with our upcoming, in the next few weeks, with our custodial staff, with professional learning. It's strange that it may sound, you know, going back over, you know, some of the cleaning protocols and chemicals and things like that, so professional learning for everybody is a really important thing, and that was just an example of that tonight. So, I'm glad that's allowing well. So, in your board packets, you have a fairly long, multi-page, very detailed, small print report of lots of, it's soup to nuts, it's everything including the kitchen saying about communication. We probably have forgotten a few things, because you always forget something after you've written it, but it's a, sort of an all-encompassing, with some examples at the end. I am not reading every word of that tonight. I do have a little PowerPoint, it's more of a summary PowerPoint, I'll just hit some of the highlights here, and you can sort of still follow through with the detailed part if you want to, that helps, but just wanted to kind of bring the highlights for you folks as well as for those who are going to be watching this at home on Access TV. Thank you, Carl, thank you very much.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Well, and I want to thank Carl because this was finished this afternoon. So, he just got it. So, at any rate, there we are. So, we'll try to hit the highlights as I mentioned. This is a communication plan that really represents the work that I do, the administrative team does. There's certainly some overlap into what teachers do as well, but it's mostly how we look at communication in all ways and shapes. Overview and purpose of this communication plan. The purpose is to have planned systematic communications, make sure we get the right information out in real-time, understanding the people. We want to understand public opinion as well. And we also ultimately want to provide improvement to programs and improvement to services for students. That's our goal overall here. The key publics that we communicate with are obviously our internal to the school as well as outside of the school, external. And we look at communication from the advantage point of it is contact. Communication is contact with people, whether it's written, whether it's verbal, whether it's being present at something and supporting with your presence or with your being, whatever that might be. So, communication really is a wide-ranging area. In terms of the internal public, obviously, obviously with the teaching staff, the support staff, administrative staff, and students. We also have the Board of Education, I'll add you in as well in a moment. But teaching staff, obviously, I'm not going to give you a very example here, but we have direct contact with teachers, a lot of visibility in the classroom, a lot of support, goal-setting through their evaluation process, support staff members. There's regular interactions, as you heard tonight, there's professional development that we deliver to teacher assistants. We meet with the health office, for example. We have facility inspections and there's conversations and communication through that. Our administrative staff, within our own team, we have daily contact, probably we have contact more than daily. It's like by the minute, I think. We text each other on a frequent basis because there's a lot to keep track of and a lot going on. There's coaching, there's supervision, there's problem-solving in regards to the problem, in regards to communication. In terms of students, the team and I try to be as visible as possible in classrooms, have direct participation with activities, to be there to support that. There is actually some type of direct teaching that goes on in communication with kids in classrooms. And we also provide a great handbook. It's been an award-winning handbook in the past. And the handbook is a way of communicating to parents and students about expectations that we have. It's more than rules, it's expectations, it's protocols, it's what to do here and what not to do there. And of course, there's communication with you folks as the Board of Education, the board updates that I send you, the meetings that we participate in together, the subcommittees, and other individual conversations that take place. As you can see, I'm breezing through the longer one, I'm sort of hitting each one on the highlights. Our external public is a wide range of groups. We have our current Beecher Road School parents. We communicate to them through our website, my superintendent updates, the principal e-newsletter, which was recognized tonight by CAPE as an award-winning document because it's gone green, but also it has all those other positive and successful characteristics. We really maintain an open-door policy as well as an open email policy. And there's a lot of individual conferencing that goes on between parents and administration. Woodbridge residents and taxpayers, we communicate through being at town events, sending out The Bridge. That's the publication that goes out at the end of the year. And there's a copy in that packet as an example, the first page of last year's Bridge. That's how we get the word out to our greater Woodbridge residents, visits to the senior center, things like that. Elected officials, I meet regularly on a monthly basis with the town hall officials, of course, the first selectman and the town finance director. I also go to the board of selectmen meeting on a monthly basis to report to the board as to what's going on. I'm involved in state meetings with Legislative Task Force at the state Capitol and also involved in different committees with the Association of Public School Superintendents. We've been very involved in communicating on a regular basis with town departments, police, fire. This year, I've been talking to the building inspector a lot more than I had hoped to with our December 30th little incident that took place in the S-Wing. But we've had, we have a lot of communication with our town departments and they're very supportive. Communication is my phone, in personal contacts, texting, so on and so forth. Also, we have a very close communication relationship with our recreation department because obviously they're here in the building and we have a lot of communication there. We communicate regularly with our service providers. And the one that comes to mind the most is ACEs, that's our Regional Education Service Center. They provide many services and many contractual, contract services to us. Obviously, the news media. There's inter-agency communication that we do with Columbia because we're part of the Reader-Writers Workshop Connection and Columbia providing that. We also communicate with some local universities on a regular basis because they provide very valuable resources to us, to our students, namely the intern program that we have at University of Bridgeport, Fairfield University, they provide our interns who serve as our substitutes. And so, communication with those universities and with those particular interns is really important to our kids. We also have, obviously, crisis and emergency communication, communications. We have a committee, obviously, for that. And we also use our e-notify system and instant alert system as communication vehicles whenever there are crises and emergency communications. This is sounding kind of listy, but I want to make sure we kind of hit the highlights of all these. And the important thing is that you see who we're communicating with on the outside of the school and who we're communicating on with in the inside of the school and in the different ways we're doing that. Our website is a real important tool for us. And this page just captures just really a couple of aspects. One is, how many users do we have? Are the users increasing or decreasing? And, you know, how long are people on the website for? These days, I think people kind of move from place to place pretty quick and that kind of shows. Time on the site average is only 2 minutes and 23 seconds. That's probably longer than I spend sometimes when I go on different websites. But you'll see, this data is really comparing the most recent year, July 1st, through this really last week compared to the previous year, the year previous to that. And you can see that number of users or new users is up by 5 or more percent and the number, percent of page views is also up. So, website is being used. We're constantly looking at our website and the struggle for any organization or any company is always to make sure your website is accurate, up to date. We're continually struggling to make sure that's the case. And it kind of makes me think, I need to do that again tomorrow and look at that a little bit. If you're wondering, what are the top areas that are visited by users on our website? It's really the areas that people go to, the homepage, they go to the faculty and staff directory, they go to the calendar, they go to the e-day program to register, the cafeteria, employment opportunities. Those are the areas that are the most used and the most visited on our website. As you know, we also use the e-notify system. That's the system that sends out emails to you occasionally. And there is a couple, at least one example in your packet. We have over 1,000 email addresses that represent parent emails in our school family. Sometimes both parents have theirs listed, sometimes only one. This is something I think that came up at one other time along the way. You know, it's always a curious question. We get so many emails, we're inundated with communication in our lives. And I know there's a lot of things, you know, even before this meeting, I was going through one of my email accounts and I was just hitting delete, 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 not even opening it up because I should probably just unsubscribe, but I don't. But that's what I do to some of those things. And so, this just gives interesting information. What's the actual open rate when people get something from the principal or the superintendent? They're pretty close, so there's not a lot of variance here. Around 60%, people will actually open the email and read it. So, you know what that means, the other 40% are doing with that. What does click-through rate mean? What that really means is that how many people, once they're into the actual email, they've actually opened it, how many people actually click on a link that is there to go further? There's always, in all of our messages, there's always at least one additional place you can click and that's to get to the website if you want to. Sometimes there's more than one link to click on, but there's always at least one. So, it shows how many do or don't go any further than just reading that message.
I have a quick question, Bob.
Yes.
Because I've heard different things about like how you open it and, you know, all of that affects whether or not you're included in the open rate. I mean, is it, we, we're pretty comfortable that this is, you know, 56 and 62% of our, the people you send it to are looking at it and we think the other percentage are not, are actually leaving.
This is what we can quantify as the minimum number of users. There's, in talking to James, our technology director, there's one small caveat that we can't quantify that he doesn't believe based upon his knowledge in the communications world. Maybe there's 5% more and there are some, there are some things sometimes that are sent out that we would send out that, it depends on who your service provider is, basically, I'll put it that way, in terms of your phone or that kind of a thing. So, there may be a few that are not included there, but it's generally only maybe 5% more. He would be better to be here to explain that to me.
Yeah, no, I just...
But I know what you're saying and that...
All the time, people have said the open rate is hard, hard to quantify because, you know, like some, like I said, when I look at the email the first time, you know, it looks red, you know, even though I haven't read it, but it's opened as red.
Bob, you know, sometimes with communications, I think we all feel this way, we're like a hamster on a hamster wheel. And we're constantly kind of trying to clean our inboxes up, trying to get the relevant pertinent information out of whatever platform we're subscribed to. I think there's probably a general public consensus that these models are going to be relatively ineffective and we see this sort of decreasing effectiveness of it. Have you thought about other ways how we may be able, or maybe allocate some time to think about ways that we may be able to communicate more dynamically? Because I do think every, you know, Christmas tree shop, pottery, you know, whatever it is, is muddled with all these other things until we can really sort of get more effective. So, I'm wondering, what are inefficiencies you see? How are you thinking sort of forward about? You know, I'm also worried because texting is always so problematic too because it's one of those things that interrupt your day all the time and it can create a lot of inefficiencies. I think we all recognize that in a lot of what we do and ends up becoming a priority right away. So, any thoughts on that or maybe this summer, how we're thinking about?
When I get to the last page, there'll be a little bit of a thought there. It may not be, it's probably an opening or starting to that. But you know, this world of technology, communication, electronic communication is, continues to move faster than most of us can keep pace with. So...
How worried are you about it?
How worried am I about it?
About being able to maintain this communication.
Well, I am concerned because, and so, I can speak out of both sides of my mouth. As a parent who, the electronic, so my kids are in their 20s. So, I still get, I still get things from their colleges and I assume that they're just asking me for money, okay? So, and they probably are. But there were times, though, when they were still in college and I'm thinking to myself, did I always open that email or did I just click it because I, it doesn't, just by the title, it doesn't look like it's all that important. So, maybe it's how we message the subject or maybe, maybe it's how we're sending the messages out, wood vehicle. But I do know that I've been, I've been guilty of deleting myself as a parent. But on the other hand, from an elementary standpoint, my hope, my ultimate hope ideally is that parents would always open up something from their child's elementary school. That may be too idealistic, but it's just because of the age and, you know, the vulnerability of an elementary-age child versus someone who's in their 20s and graduate school kind of a thing. So, that's just a quick, just a quick, but I do have a couple of comments at the end that I might be able to help out with that. So, you just might wonder, you know, so here's a quick snapshot of what's the parent and family perspective on communication that we've had most recently? The Panorama Parents-Family Survey that's going out tomorrow, well, the most recent version of that in 2016, the question that was there, "I am satisfied with the way the school communicates with parents." So, the parents, 89% of parents responded favorably to that, meaning they were either strongly agreeing or agreeing with that. So, that seems to be a very strong statement of at that point in time of the way they felt about communication. Last year, Gina, for purposes of continuous improvement of her own newsletter, which we just heard about was recognized by CAPE, but still wanting to, you know, do everything he can, she put out a question in her actual e-newsletter to parents, "Please respond. Do you prefer paper or digital messages and what is your preferred frequency, how often?" Now, that went out to probably 800 or so.
Everybody gets...
Everybody gets that, but only 11 people responded. So, you can take that as, I guess, if you don't respond, you're pretty happy the way it is and just, "I'm fine with it, don't ask me." Or, there were 11 responses, everybody wanted digital, who responded and they were sort of all over the map. "I would like it weekly, I'd like to have it monthly, I like to keep it the way it is, two times a month." So, you know, so those helped us gauge, you know, are we sort of on the right track, at least from a parent perspective? You're always going to have people who don't feel it's, you know, there's always going to be people who say, "I don't think the communication is good." You know, there's always going to be things about that in life, about anything. And by the way, sometimes we get things wrong. Sometimes we get the communication wrong and we try to write it, we try to fix it and it's one of our goals as well. So, and we've done that this year, actually. But bottom line, I think we're on the right track, but I think we need to also not be, we need to be sort of with the curve, not behind the curve in communication. As I continue on this page, we know that CAPE has recognized Woodbridge many times for communication. We saw it tonight, but we've had many, many recognitions in the past for our Student Parent Handbook, for the annual publication that goes out to the community called The Bridge, recognition by CAPE under various presentations that have been done, that have been submitted to them, budget presentations, testing presentations, presentations on various programs and things like that. So, we know that, we believe our communication, this is an acknowledgement that there's quality and it ranks up there. So, sort of bringing this to a conclusion, so where does all this bring us now and to next year? And to possibly to, you know, what do we think about all this as we summarize it? Well, things we know we're going to be doing a little differently next year is to do our Power School registration online, to get forms to parents, or not forms, but to do online registration for all of our new students and to do the same kind of process for our returning students. So, we're trying to change that up and make it electronic and make that happen as the curve is changing for most districts. Something that goes sort of hand-in-hand with that Power School registration online is also changing and switching to a different system for our alerts. You know, you get the Honeywell Instant Alert when it's, the little snowflakes are falling outside in the morning and that little message comes. Well, you know, many of the districts have moved to Alert Solutions as another vendor and we are looking to do that for next year as well. There's a lot of benefits to this, there's some financial savings. They have things in other languages, which is a very big benefit. It also integrates with the Power School, so there's some benefits to this as well. So, it will be a shift. We need to start communicating that now as an administrative team out to parents because, you know how things are, it takes, everybody's got to catch on and there's, there's going to be a learning curve for everybody. Nancy, getting to your point, you know, so what are other things we can do? So, we have not engaged in social media at this point, but that may be one of the ways, you know, do tweets. Is that the way to get information to people that's more effective? Or is it Instagram or Twitter are two areas that we're looking at as potential social media? I don't know if that's the answer or not, but that's something that some school districts have engaged in. Elementary districts are a little bit interesting. Obviously, a K-12 district, most of this social media work is done with a K-12 district by one person in that district. Elementary districts, we're always concerned about kids, confidentiality, protection, things like that. So, those are the things and the filters that we would want to make sure that are completely checked out before we engage in that. So, that's a starting point for our thoughts about how do we get messages out that people will notice? And also, it's a way to promote the positive on social media. Sometimes we know, sometimes social media goes south. You know, sometimes something starts on social media, there's a topic and the comments come and all of a sudden, things are going down. come and all of a sudden it's, things are going down, it just, without any kind of reference to facts or things like that. So social media is a way, from the school perspective, to provide positive information that's, that's helpful to parents and stakeholders. The other area that we've talked about, that I'll be in communication with, with the Woodbridge Town News, our local newspaper that comes out on a regular monthly basis, is to try to get out all the great information that I put out in the parent update that goes just to our parents, to all town residents. So that's, it would really be just sort of, kind of recapitulating it, but it's all good stuff and I think it's things that, that town residents and taxpayers would certainly benefit from knowing about. So where does this all lead us, just in terms of a summary, and you may have some questions at the end, but we believe, everything you've just read and we've heard about, we have a very comprehensive way of communicating. It's ongoing, it's systematic, it's predictable. We believe we reach a variety of publics, all the publics that need to know that, internal and external. We believe we have a positive parent perception and response to what we're doing. We have recognition by CAPE organization, which is a way of validating our, our success and our efforts. We do believe that there are areas of refinement and continuous improvement. We're looking at that whole area again of the Power School registration and our instant alert changeover, as well as some new means such as social media and using some of the print newspapers in a more all encompassing way. So this is a real streamlined version of what you have in writing and I'm glad to take any questions or comments or thoughts. We're looking for, always for ways to do things better.
So I, one of my questions was, how do we, you know, inform instruction? You know, how do we get feedback on the communication and what do we do? Obviously, if we sent out 800 emails and 11 people responded on, you know, "How's this working for you?" You know, that, that's not very encouraging. And I know we get the survey question as, you know, as a bulk, you know, "Do you think the schools is communicating?" And it, it is hard and I don't know if it's a little easier internally, you know, to say, "Okay, you know, we have faculty meetings, we have, you know, these vehicles, we have PLCs, we have," you know, how do we get feedback on those things, you know, to make sure that internally the communication seems appropriate? I'm just, I'm just curious if we have mechanisms where we're looking at, you know, feedback that we're getting. I know it's a little harder for parents, you know, because you've got people all over the place, you know, "Yeah, I want this every day, I want it every month, I don't ever want to see it again," you know? So I'm just curious, you know, other than the survey, where you get a reasonable number of, you know, people responding, is there any, any way that, that you're getting feedback about either internal, external communication that's kind of, you know, informing how you, how you do things or change things? And I realize 11 responses out of 800, now I'm sad.
So besides the Panorama Survey, which, you know, is one way of getting information from, and again, this year will be the first time from fam, not just families, but.
Right.
Staff members, both certified and non-certified, as well as students. We do send out surveys on a fairly regular basis after professional development and professional learning experiences, so we.
We use Google Forms for our feedback for, for all of our professional development days, for our sessions, and so we look at that with the Professional Development Committee to see, are we meeting the needs? And over the last two to three years with the Professional Development Committee, the feedback has been very good since we have kind of broadened the, the learning opportunities.
Yeah.
So feedback's a great about that.
Good.
Google Forms is a great way to do it.
Everybody who gets professional development, custodians, the TAs, everybody's part of the feedback loop on that.
So that's been teachers so far.
Okay.
So we have just had the teaching assistants over the two half-days, so we have not done that with that yet.
Okay.
Needs a little training for them to be able to kind of, for some folks to access, but they're not always on it. So that's something that actually we need to do.
And I know our, our, the consultant that we also work with on our macro curriculum often has a feedback form that she requests before teachers even leave the room. She often will give them a little feedback form for her own growth and reflection.
The other means of communication is through our team, team leaders.
Right.
So we've expanded the team leaders to now make sure we've included the specialists or the fine arts and we've included special education so that all kind of the certified staff are represented. And so that's an open forum for discussion when there's either information that needs to be disseminated or we need to receive information and teachers use them as the most heavy sheet.
So, so there's lots of opportunities for staff, especially certified staff, to give feedback on communications, professional development, like, you know, are these faculty meetings providing what you want, what we need to do? Okay. And then, I know it's, it's much harder when you go outside of the, the school, you know, I mean, getting feedback from, from parents on communication. And I, you know, and again, it's the same thing. So what do you say? If you don't hear anything, everybody's happy, you know, I'm going with that. You know, it's, it's very hard.
I'm going with that.
Yeah. It's, it's just, it's just hard. But internally, the, the level of communication, we feel like this is the appropriate level. I mean, from, you know, your review of how often an update goes out from the principal, the superintendent, you know, classroom updates, all of those things, we, we think we're in a good place based on our experience and even very informal feedback from, you know, parents or staff or.
I believe we're in a very good place.
Okay, yeah.
I believe it's very comparable to area and our different district reference group. I, I do believe that, I do believe that we have been slow and methodical and reflective to think about the social media part. We haven't been there yet.
I'm old.
But, so there was those kinds of things that we're, we're considering and I think, I think there's a lot here and I think, I think this is what parents expect and I think parents look for it in different ways and different places and at different times. So, and there's a lot of time and effort spent and, and most of the time we get it right and sometimes once in a while, you know, you miss it or it's a little later or it's, wish it was earlier, or different, or whatever, but bottom line is we're continuing looking at it and it's, it's a continuous, it's a continuous area of reflection and growth area for us.
And I do think the comment you made about K to 12 is very different than grade school. You know, Power School and this with, you know, K-12, you know, that, middle school and high school, you know, are, are using that and we're using Power School and have access to a lot of information, you know, depending on your personal opinion, whether, you know, you should be looking at that stuff all the time or not. And I think grade school is very different and we do have to be more protective of the information that's available, the information that, you know, I just, I think sometimes Power School and those kinds of vehicles, depending on how they're used, can be abused, you know, even at the middle school and high school level in terms of, you know, you see every assignment, you see every grade, it's like, what is that? You know, really, kids change every day, you know? I mean, so I, I think being, you know, thoughtful and protective and recognizing that we are at grade school, I think is important because I think the communication needs to be, you know.
Needs to be safe.
Yeah, it needs to be safe and it needs to be thoughtful and it needs to reflect the fact that these kids are fine, you know?
Just, just before I forget, and I've agreed on all those points, you folks as a board, last year when you had your retreat, you might remember that you spoke a little bit about communication and so a couple of things came out of that retreat. One was your desire to try to get more people to attend, no offense to the three of you, more than the three of you to attend our board meetings. So you might remember that we ended up putting out an email, a regular routine one on the Friday before a board meeting, reminding everybody in the school family, "There's a board meeting on Monday, the 20, whatever, and it's seven o'clock in this," and so, kudos to you because I think that's important, but as we know, sometimes those efforts, it is what it is. Also, one of the areas that, our First Selectmen, as you know, has the news and events, little newsletter that goes out about every month and most months, maybe 50%, when they've had room, they've been allowing us to get something in there, so we've been doing that whenever we possibly can. This month, when it comes out, it'll be about pre-K registration, pre-K or pre-K? Pre-K. Right, yeah. Last month, they had something about our Read Across America program. So anyway, so those are two things that came out of our, our board retreat and we'll continue to look for ways to enhance that.
Just want to acknowledge that those came out as also recommendations that the board had made to you, Bob, and the team. I just want to thank you and the team for really taking a very proactive and very comprehensive look at where our communications have been and articulated just in this presentation and in these documents. I think it's wildly useful for us, for me, and probably for the community, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. And there's a lot of hands that make this work, it's the administrative team together. Marcia's a key person in this, because I call her at 5:05 in the morning. And James Crawford is a very, very key person because the e-notifies are sent out by him and so I call him at 5:06 in the morning on a snowy day and so, all those kinds of things. So there's a lot of people who are, are key in all this and it's, it's a team effort.
Did anybody else have any questions or comments for Bob? I think, I think, you know, I know you said there's like lots of tiny print and the detail, but that I think is very helpful as well as this summer, so thank you.
Went over the building update in which we learned there's various repairs done over the spring break. The rest of the damaged furniture from the flooding was discarded. Various painting projects were tackled, including the main hallway, the north main vestibule. The HVAC systems were all serviced and new mud control mats were put in place just about We went over the assessment update, we got an assessment update and learned the exterior has been evaluated and following that, estimates and suggestions are being compiled to be reviewed later for various repairs that need to be done on the outside of the building.
So these are kind of individual projects as opposed to the whole building, something?
Right, so things like potholes out in the north lawn.
Oh, okay, I was thinking the building, I was thinking the.
More around the grounds.
The grounds, okay, okay. So I was kind of hoping we just did the building.
And the ad hoc pipe burst committee update, Matt Ward and Greg Kula were in attendance at the last meeting and they discussed varying opinions as to what issues could be and might be with the system. No specific issues were correctly identified and.
So in their estimation, the things that needed to be added to any sort of monitoring have been added and we think the system is operating how, how it needs to be for, you know, for being good stewards of the equipment in the school? You wouldn't go that far?
I wouldn't call it that definitive.
Okay.
What I would say is that any monitoring that can be done is now being done and being ironed out. There are a few little things like the, recently the Dectron unit in the pool, pool area had another repair done to it, valve was replaced and also during the earlier repair in which there was a bearing issue resolved, it was discovered that there was additional contact points for being able to, for the monitor that, and that's now being done. So I'd say there's a pretty good hand on overall monitoring of the system and the committee continues to meet at future dates.
And I'm curious, has, originally the committee, the ad hoc committee assigned by the town was supposed to report, you know, back to the Board of Selectmen intermediately? And I understand like why, why that didn't happen, but do they have, do we have, you know, kind of a, we're looking towards the state to, to update the Board of Selectmen and kind of finish the committee, or only in the matter of like, how, how many things do we need to have happening all at once? Like, you know, this was a very short-term.
Yeah.
Assignment, as I understood it, from the charge.
It was supposed to be, but the charge was large enough that we're still reviewing things, both with the HVAC systems as well as security.
So we don't have an estimate from that group?
Not yet.
Okay, okay. Maybe at the next meeting, you know, we can try to see if there's a, you know, I'm not, you know, saying we need an endpoint, I'm just saying, you know, this was a group that was supposed to make a very targeted.
Right.
You know, review and then, you know, go back to the Board of Selectmen with recommendations. So I just want to make sure, you know, these things.
We're staying on that.
Kind of take on a life of their own. The last building, it lasted what, four years? Okay, any questions for John or anything else?
No.
Okay. Finance, we, you know, you have the reports in your packet. I don't think that there was any major information that changed, the special ed costs went up and there were some costs that went up, so the deficit got a little worse and we'll see what we see in the next, the next finance meeting. But it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, a, a change that people didn't expect or planned for. Curriculum.
Curriculum met on April 12 and there are committee meeting notes in the packet. We had a really fabulous presentation by three teachers in the grade. Three team that presented about enrichment clusters for kids' choice time. It was really very informative. Our discussion then continued on other enrichment programming that's taking place across the grade levels and differentiation that's taking place, so kudos to the third grade team who has really done a, I think, a bang up job with the enrichment clusters, well received by the students and the teachers are, are finding it to be a very positive experience for the kids. So we will not be meeting in May and our next meeting is scheduled for tentatively June 7th at 4:30.
Any questions for curriculum? Okay. Policy? We are setting up our next meeting, which I think Marcia should, is probably our final meeting. We have just a couple of things to wrap up, so we'll finalize the date and provide it to the board.
Aces, as you know, I retired from the Aces board, so I got nothing there. CAPE? As far as upcoming events, there's a legislative wrap-up group on Tuesday, May 18. So that's basically a briefing on new laws, regulations and administrative activities and court decisions that will require action by our local or regional school districts. So I'm going to try to attend that. I don't know if anyone else is going to try as well, but hopefully at least one of us will be there. And then another one that is collective bargaining, Tuesday, June 12. And it doesn't really give a lot of information, but I guess it's fairly self-explanatory. More information on that.
Yeah, that's only because the bargaining for, most of the, we have five union contracts? Is that right, Bob?
Administrative, teacher, teacher assistant, and then we have a fourth group, which is a custodian and secretary of four.
Secretary of four, okay. And the board gets involved most heavily in the teacher, the WEA contract negotiations. Most of the other ones, because of their impact on the budget, the level of impact and, and the amount of, of discussion that goes on, we don't usually have a, a board member involved in, in those things. And we, we certainly could, we just haven't. But the, the WEA, I guess, comes up the end of next year? It ends in 2020, so we usually negotiate like a year before that. So it is, it is coming up, it is something, you know, be interesting, I'm going to have to like look at this CAPE thing because it's, it's not the kind of thing, if you've never done it before, you've got really much preparation for, so it might be good to see, you know, what CAPE is offering. It's, it's very time intensive and it takes a lot of time and we do it in a fairly short period of time, but we do need board representation, you know, for those negotiations, so that's, so I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, no worries at all. One thing, keeping it short and sweet, but one thing that, just to raise awareness too, is, let's see, it's, it's from today, actually, so folks can reference that email, but asking that we contact members of Congress or strong opposition to the legislation for the vouchers and that whole piece of where they'll take money from. It's HR 5199, so that they are still hearing things. So that they are still hearing things, but as soon as April 26, they may have further discussions on that. So if folks want to keep money in the public schools and not in the vouchers, that's one way we can advocate for that, is Congress. There was one thing else that I wanted to share. That's what I was going to say. Trying to think, I think it was something about the summer schools, and their effectiveness, and basically, it depends, was kind of the response, and a lot of it had to do with the quality of the program, if it was a good quality program. One of the pieces that they found, with this review at least, when they reviewed 25 different studies, and one of the things they found, the small class size was a component of that, and that they were capped at 20, was considered a small class size. So I know that with the whole, like, class size thought processing with our subcommittee and whatnot, I thought that would be just something to point out, that there have been a lot of studies to show, at least in summer school, that the smaller class sizes.
And these are like academic school programs?
Academic, yeah, yeah, to help prevent, sorry, to help prevent the loss of, yeah, academic gains.
Summer school's very different from the school year, though. And people going to summer school are different, potentially, you know, the reason for them to be in summer school are different than ones who go to school all year, nine months. So I think if we do whatever we look at, we need to.
Right, of course, of course. Okay. I thought that was interesting. Questions for Megan? Okay. Okay, upcoming meeting, strategic plan updates. From my perspective, I think the updates you've been giving have been very helpful, especially the fact that there's very concrete dates. And as they change, if there's, you know, changes in our expectations on when things are going to happen and how they're going to happen, that is always, you know, I think, incredibly valuable to see the changes in, you know, because it's, you know, it's a plan, an extended plan, a five-year plan, so it's not that things aren't going to change, but that's always very helpful. But I think the updates, from my perspective, on the strategic plan have been very good. I don't know if anybody has any other feedback on anything they want to see that we're not seeing in those updates? And then the other one is school-wide enrichment. This is the presentation or the meet, the discussion about what are we doing? What are we doing for kids at all levels, in the classroom, outside the classroom? And I thought the curriculum summary of enrichment programming was a great start. I don't know, oh yeah, differentiation, I thought, you know, just that, that whole category of how we've been doing that for years, and what it means in the classroom. And I know we've had some demos in the past of some of the differentiation stuff, and also some of the workshop stuff, which I felt was very, very helpful. And I'm glad that included in here is some of the other things, you know, the open studio and also the after-school activity opportunities for enrichment. So these, this list, I thought, was a fantastic basis. So I don't know if anybody else had things they were hoping to see at our next meeting in terms of enrichment?
Not enrichment, but I did have something, I don't know quite where it would fall. Maybe it falls in strategic plan, so if I might just mention it.
Sure.
Heritage months. We see a pattern across many institutions, schools, to celebrate Heritage Month. Hispanic, let's you know, Heritage Month is usually September to October. Black History Month, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is in May. Just thinking about how we might think about the value of that, I have heard a few things here and there, that people are wondering, how prepared are teachers and educators? I'm thinking about those, because they're tricky. It's very tricky to, you know, share and provide information on heritage, and there's a lot of confusion around that. So I'm wondering, maybe because also, I'm so deeply engrossed in Asian Pacific Heritage Month, and it's quite present in other school districts that I'm familiar with outside of Connecticut. And Connecticut actually has the largest, had 65% growth from 2005 to 15 in the Asian Pacific American population. And actually, within 15 years, supposedly, Asian Pacific Americans will also be the largest non-white group in the state and potentially in the country, definitely by 2040. So I'm just wondering how we might be thinking about that as we further continue our idea and notion of presenting role models who look like all the students, and thinking about that. So I'm not sure where exactly, if it's probably not curriculum, but maybe it's, it's definitely, obviously, a topic within the Diversity Committee, and that's a subcommittee that the school is administering. But I also think it rises to the occasion of a superintendent potential look at how do we integrate heritage months? Because we kind of do it a little bit, and we try to do it in other ways, but thinking about the wonderful cohesion within the communications plan, might we consider ways to be cohesive about looking at heritage?
And I do, I do think that an update from the strategic plan, I know social studies always gets, you know, a bad rap, and never gets any attention. And I know we've talked about the fact that, you know, without a whole curriculum revamp, can we take advantage of some things that are going on, you know, at an older age, Clay Hamilton, and, you know, the whole, you know, excitement around that, like, you know? So maybe when you're, you know, looking at the strategic plan, and we're looking at, you know, social studies, we can, I don't know where things are there, but maybe see, you know, are there some opportunities without, you know, the larger full curriculum change? And I know that was one of the things that we were, you know, we were trying to do with, you know, with other things in the lectures.
That's slated for next year, right? For strategic plan is looking a little bit deeper at social studies, if I might recall.
So our, you'll hear more this next month, our goal was to try to get social studies off the ground this year. We actually haven't gotten it quite off the ground yet, and we're hoping maybe this summer that we'll be able to get it off the ground. It's just been that one extra thing that...
It's a deep dive. It's a heavier, heavier thing than we thought.
It's heavy, and, you know, heritage month can very easily, you know, my first, my first reaction can, social studies is a great place to embed that in a meaningful way. And there's a lot of debate around, there's a lot of importance about all this, and there's a lot of debate about, you know, do you celebrate something in a month, or do you celebrate things all the time?
All year.
And so, so those are the questions, you know? And so I think those are always the things you're thinking about. And I think it's embedded, in a sense, it's embedded in the structure of who we are philosophically in terms of even responsive classroom, you know, looking at responsive classroom, it's a community in that classroom, it's a community celebrating everybody and who they are, and where they've come from, and what their unique gifts, and it's in our mission statement, it's in our vision statement, and all those kinds of places. So ideally, it's embedded all the time, it's, as opposed to, so, but it's a, it's a great philosophical thing, so...
It is. It's a fun exercise.
It is. So it's an area that, yeah, and there are pockets of it in this school, for sure. So it's a matter of how do you strategically ensure things are happening? And social studies is one way of kind of bringing it to light, that's for sure, getting into that process.
The other thing, and I know we've, we've talked about this a little bit, and you were talking about Eli Whitney and some of those things, our field trips, you know, many of them are, you know, they continue to be wonderful, and we love them, and we don't want to lose them. But that's the other area, I think, we had talked about in the past, is, you know, is there something we can do within, you know, field trips, or something, you know, like that, to move us quickly in certain areas, you know, as opposed to, again, the rigor and the time required for the curriculum review and everything else? So, and I know, you know, we have to be sensitive on field trips, because it is, you know, paid for by families, so we need to be sensitive about how many we have, and, you know, their value and everything else. But, you know, maybe, again, I don't know if we're looking at those in each curriculum area, or if in the strategic plan, if you can kind of give us a sense of, you know, we also have all the special activities that are sponsored by the PTO. And again, you know, some of those, they're wonderful, every single time they happen, you know, are there things, and again, the PTO has been so supportive and has done, you know, such fantastic fundraising, you know, is there some opportunities that maybe, again, they might be able to provide? A lot of our special activities are related to reading, you know, poetry and art and, you know, wonderful things. But we also have, you know, what's his name, Clive, I can't remember the Native American who comes in and the bird, you know, thing. So there's, there's lots of, you know, things, is he a, what?
I forgot his name.
Clive something? Do you remember? No? Okay. But anyway, you know, maybe, again, I know we're trying to kind of say, okay, social studies altogether is a big thing, but maybe there's some things we can do, you know, a little bit off sides to try to bump things up a little bit, understanding that, you know, we've still got the full job, so.
And I'm not suggesting the right way, you know, but that's, I think it is a conversation that's tricky, one that we should be up for the challenge. Did you find his name?
It's bugging me. I'm searching. Googling. Okay. She's searching. On the PTO website, it used to be under special activities, but I don't know where it is now.
There's another hit.
There you go. All right. Okay, so did, nobody had anything else in terms of expectations for the enrichment discussion? So, okay, great. New business, we have a few things. Bob, want to walk us through?
Yep. Actually, I'm going to find my correct page here. So we have a certified staff resignation. Have I got these in, do I have these in the right order?
I think so.
Yes.
Well, at least I'm...
Yes, we have, so we have a certified staff resignation. I'm still trying to find my pages. My goodness, Bob. There we are. So our, one of our technology teachers, Danielle Colado, on April 4, announced her resignation. And Danielle was not with us very long, but certainly made a great impact in terms of the work she's done in conjunction with, in partnership with James and the Technology Department. And we wish her well, she's got a young family, and she's stepping out. So we are, that's one of the positions we are advertising, and advertise for, and we'll be looking to interview for and fill in the next coming weeks.
And not that we ever actually can turn these down, but does somebody want to make a motion for this one?
Move that we accept the resignation of Danielle Colado, effective March 29, 2018, with regret. I also would say that her contributions to the Beach Road School Moves are really commendable, so.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Right?
Our next one is Nadia, who is one of our music teachers. You might remember Nadia, who, she started the year, and then she had a baby in October, or late September. And so she's home, and the contract, the WEA contract, allows for an additional year for her to request that as a leave, and she has done that with this letter. And so, in accordance with the contract and the language and being in compliance with that, we are asking you to grant that tonight.
And so, so she's basically been out this year?
For most of this year, that's correct.
For most of this year, since October.
But since she started the year, the contract allows her to do this.
Right. Well, and I think, I think in the past, I mean, whether, you know, we want to continue that, we've allowed continuations, you know?
Right, sure, sure. And so, yeah, so you are right, and this one, this one specifically has contract language that allows it. Some others have been beyond what the contract language is, but it has been at the purview of the superintendent with the board's approval.
Okay. Can you see a motion for this one? Move that we grant Nadia Colado a leave of absence for the 2018-19 school year. Second. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. And the IDA grant?
I would turn it over to Cheryl for a moment. Cheryl, I just have a few summary remarks about the IDA. Every year, you folks approve this, it's something that you must do, and we send it on, this is a, I'll let, I'll let...
Come on, you're doing great.
You spent, you spent, you spent some of your vacation getting to be a better friend of IDA.
I became very good friends with IDA. Basically, there are not too many drastic changes from the past, from what you've seen. It has the same goals it had had in the past, with a emphasis really looking at reading, especially with the accountability that we're looking at with the reading. It has the same goals, and basically, what the funding is used for is partial payment of some salaries, as well as some supplies, and the supplies are used towards reading type things like that. So nothing too drastically different.
I move to approve the 2018-19 IDA grant, plus submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education. Second. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, we are back to public comment. I think that we'll just, you don't have to even get up, Marcia, it's okay. We do, Bob has asked that we do have a very quick non-meeting, so we, do we adjourn?
Yes, you adjourned.
We adjourned. Okay. All right, so we need to move to adjourn. Okay? Okay, all those in favor? So now, everybody except Bob and us needs to leave, and then we'll have a non-meeting. So thank you all.